All right, I've got seven o'clock. You guys ready to roll?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna do is go through the ground rules again. We got some new people joining us. So please silence cell phones, try to minimize background noise. Please identify yourself when making comments, motion seconds, et cetera. When not speaking, please use the mute option on your screen to eliminate background noise. If it's getting too noisy from a certain participant, Greg has the ability to mute for you. You will have to unmute yourself. He cannot unmute you. Please let anyone who is speaking finish before making comments. And audience members, please wait until the presentation is complete before asking questions or making comments, or we'll be a time for public comment at the end of the meeting. So I'm gonna just do a quick roll call. If the planning commission members can chime in, let us know you're here. I'll start with Andy.
Present.
Tim?
Present.
Alex? I know you're there.
There we go. Present. Operator error.
There you go. And John?
Present.
Okay, so that's all our members. Anybody else want to let us know you're here? I know we have three applicants. We should have a handful of people on board.
Jim Miller's here.
David Collingwood is here.
Dean Rittenhouse is here, DHP.
Ken Justice here, KMJ Inc.
Bob Irick is here.
Yes, we're here. I'm here. Sorry.
All right. If no one else is gonna identify themselves, I'm gonna proceed with the meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our May 12 meeting. Does anyone have any comments, corrections on the minutes?
I have none.
Andy? This is Tim. I have none.
Alex, I have none.
John, I have none.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I saw motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Tim.
Tim, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is Snyder Butter Creek Builders. So if you guys wanna take control.
Okay, you want me to start or Steve, Steve, do you want anything you want to open with before I get started?
Well, I could just, I could just give a brief background here. If everyone recalls, this is Tim Snyder's property. It was the old lot seven from the original Butter Creek subdivision. There was a 13 lot subdivision with a P Loop street that has approval from years back. Tim, recent, or the year ago submitted a somewhat revised plan of the P Loop street, but in the meantime, during discussions, he chose to present this cul-de-sac plan to, in an attempt to reduce the impact to woodland clearing, grading, and et cetera, et cetera. And that brought us to the discussion of the long cul-de-sac street and emergency access. So since the last meeting, he met with Trump Bowers Little Fire Company Chief and made a couple revisions to the plan. So with that, we issued our, I guess it's our June 2nd, 2020 letter, and I'll let Ken, Ken go from there.
Hey, Ken, before you get started, if you guys don't mind, if there's, will comply, if you don't feel compelled to chime in on why there will comply, just tell us it's a will comply without reading through the whole thing. Just, we're gonna have a long night. I'm trying to expedite something.
No problem. Actually, I was gonna make this real easy. The whole crux to this presentation is if we have acceptance of this plan with the long cul-de-sac, we can either comply or we'll be applying for waivers for the other comments. But what we last left, it was something you were gonna consider based on discussions we've had with the fire chief and with Public Works. And we still are on the, the basis of our design was, if you've ever gone out there and seen how great the woodlands are and the terrain out there, it didn't make sense, even in that the spirit of your zoning ordinance to put in all that extra road and then take out all those woods. So we're trying to find something that'll kind of marry the spirit of your zoning ordinance and comply with a decent subdivision here. Our cul-de-sac, we've made it big enough at the end. I put in a turn-in radius for a large hook and ladder, like you'd have in Philadelphia for a high-rise. Knowing, I don't think you have one out there, but if it'll comply with that, it should comply with the fire trucks you have as well as the garbage trucks. And we've allowed ample areas for the fire pools for the fire chief. Matter of fact, our original design, we left them three areas and he really wants one at the top and one in the middle. So that's easy to do with that. Getting, getting the items, Steve, that you had mentioned, will comply with the majority of them. We're gonna be asking for waivers for the lot line configurations, because we do realize we have some odd shaped lots. We're trying to make everything fit within the shape of the overall parcel out there. So I know that'll be a waiver we'll be looking for. Same with the roadway width and sidewalks. I think Tim is still considering whether or not we're just going to go for a waiver or put them in with the sidewalks. When we go to preliminary plan, we'll make sure we have that clearly spelled out. So really, I guess at this point, we have no objection to any, and will comply with the rest of the letter, but the big question is, will you allow us to continue to go on with the roadway configuration the way we have it?
All right, well, that's a good starting point. I don't remember, well, I guess I kind of remember. We did, we were kind of waiting to hear back from the fire marshal and the road crew. I don't remember if the planning commission was not gonna be objecting to the length of this if the fire marshal and road crew are on board. So I, this is not a, something that we deal with every, every month. So it's something we need to have some discussion about again. I'm sorry. Steve, do you have any comments on this? Are we seeing anything like this anywhere else?
No, we've managed to avoid the long cul-de-sacs over the many years. One of the reasons we had, we had put it in the ordinance. Obviously, the, you know, the concern was roads like Tower Road and some of our other long dead end roads that, you know, are old existing roads and we're stuck with them. We're trying to avoid creating similar situations. This is a weird balance, because they meet the number, the maximum number of lots that you have specified. It's just the road length that's in question. And a lot of other areas, you know, if there was emergency accessway somewhere along that road, I think that would go a long way to, to resolve most people's concerns. The road department, they had no issue. I asked him two questions. One of the things we talked about was whether or not they should have curbing. I'm partial to curb, because swales get to tend to be a maintenance problem over the long term. But as far as snow plowing goes, they have no problem with the length of the road and with or without curbs, as long as they have some easements down in the cul-de-sac area to push the snow to. So that, that's their bigger concern. The fire department was where he could set up a fire pond. And as Ken was discussing, and I think I outlined in, I'm not sure which item number it was. That was a 3A, I guess. The fire company, as I understand it, said anything that happens in the, in the first half of the road, they're gonna set up the portable fire pond right at, right at Butter Creek Road, or Camp Rock Hill Road, I'm sorry, Camp Rock Hill Road and the entrance to the development. Because their interest is to be able to loop the tanker trucks through. And then for things in the back half of the cul-de-sac, they identified a location, and I'm not exactly sure which lot it falls on. Ken, you might be able to enlighten us on that.
Yeah, it'll be lot 13.
Okay, is that in the vicinity of the old storage building or whatever that building is?
Correct. Yep.
And what he wanted was an area large enough that he could take a tanker truck back there, back it in off the road to the spot where the portable pond will be, and then be able to pull, pull back out and drive, drive straight out. What he didn't want to have is tanker trucks crossing past, you know, fire equipment. That's why he doesn't need anything down in the cul-de-sac end of the, of the road, because that would cause the tanker trucks to have to drive past the active fire vehicles. They needed an area to pre-stage before the, before wherever the incident was. But to my understanding, he chose those two locations.
So the room for it, so that should be.
Yeah, that's a large lot. And as I understand, there's probably some already graded areas around that existing building. It still leaves you with the question, though, that if there's an incident at the beginning of the road, all the properties are cut off from getting out. Tim, at one time, had, had mentioned to me the possibility of, right where the 90-degree bend is, somewhere along that area, to be able to cut across to one of his existing driveways that go out to Butter Creek Road from the old lots. But I don't, I don't know if that's still a viable option. Ken, do you know anything about that?
There's, that's a possibility. We looked at actually also heading down to Butter Creek Road. But the problem is we're gonna cross the wetland.
Yeah, that's probably not viable.
Yeah. I can discuss that with Tim. If we can see, we can come up with a solution to cross over to, I guess, if you're looking at that map over to the west and come up with an access route out there for an emergency.
Correct. That would at least potentially address if something happened up close to the intersection. There would be a way around that intersection to get back out to Butter Creek Road. I don't know how the planning commission feels if that's a major concern or not at this point.
This is Chris. I would, I mean, I think anything else that we can get off of this cul-de-sac is a bonus. So I would certainly promote that. I mean, I'd rather see you have something coming right up to Camp Rock Hill Road. I mean, have you, have you looked into doing anything that way, getting back up to Camp Rock Hill with an easement or something? Ken, I guess I address that to you.
East of lot nine there, that's where our steepest slopes are and a ton of rocks and some of the best lumber that's in there. And that's why we're reluctant to try to tie up back that direction. Because that, wanna buy that one lot. Frankly, it's so beautiful there, lot 10. So we're trying to stay away from that. So our, really our option is to go west or to go south.
Yeah, I think there's a big drainage channel that comes down from Camp Rock Hill Road through that out parcel lot and down through lot 10. I mean, that, that's part of the reason that they're looking at these options, because there is so many restrictive natural features on this property.
Any, any other planning commission members have any input?
Yeah, this is Andy. I would really like to explore emergency access. I mean, we're, the difference, we're talking the difference between 800 and I think it's what, 1750 to the end of the, to the circle there. So it's better, better than double. I'd like to explore that option more fully.
This is John. I think I'd be much more comfortable with a U-shaped street rather than a dead end. I understand the issues with trying to preserve natural resources and beautiful vistas and things like that, but it, it's a tough trade-off between providing a more safe access and preserving lumber and blowing through rocks and things like that. But I think all in all, I'd be more comfortable with a U-shaped road.
Anyone else?
I'm just looking at it, trying to figure out if there's something you could fit in, coming down across lot five, maybe down to Butter Creek. It does look like it's kind of steep in some of that, but not anymore so than coming down the other way from the 90.
Yeah, the only problem about five heading down the Butter Creek Road is about the last 25 feet before you hit the road goes right through the designated wetlands. So we'd have to work out some sort of trade or mitigation to put in a roadway in that area. I mean, it's not on, not completely undoable. It's just that there's a couple more steps that would need to be done there. And again, we're not talking about a major road going through if it's emergency access, right? So, I mean, we could work something out with that. You've been doing a little land swap there. We have to take say an eighth of an acre to put an emergency access in. We could create more wetlands somewhere in, in the other region in that property.
Would it even be possible to bridge over that?
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Bridge and you still have to deal with, you know, with the disturbance to the wetland.
This is Steve. I was gonna bring up the bridge issue. It's not just a wetland. There's a big drain slot that comes down through there. And there's a little bit of a, it's not a designated stream, but if you've ever been down on Butter Creek Road, that tends to flood because of the water that comes down generally behind lot five, comes out, runs parallel to Butter Creek Road down to Butter Creek is, which is where the little concrete bridge is on, on Butter Creek Road. But there is a fair amount of water that comes through there.
Yeah, when, when, you don't have a big storm, it's running, it's only about two feet wide and about a foot deep. But when it's raining, it could get much deeper than that.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's only during a storm, but it does, it does carry a fair amount of water. So that would be a, you know, permitting issue also.
Okay, I think what you're hearing from the members is we'd like to see something other along with your cul-de-sac, some type of emergency access.
Okay.
It's sounding like presented is not gonna be acceptable to us. The cul-de-sac plant, part of the.
No, understood, understood. Okay, so we mean emergency access and Steve, the only other thing I, I'm working FEMA right now, the flood plain line I show is exactly off of their, their LiDAR map. And the problem is that the elevations don't agree from north to south. It's like a 14-foot difference. And I think you called that out. So we're trying to get that worked out, but at the moment, I'm just showing it the way they have it. But with, with, all the offices close, they have a business that we've had, so we're still dealing with that.
Right, well, that'll have to ultimately be worked out one way or another. And okay, it may ultimately be, you know, a letter map revision to get it corrected on the floodplain map.
All right, so that's your cul-de-sac issue. What other issues do we have here? I mean, we might as well just run through this letter. If it will comply, if they will comply, and if there's something, things that you're looking for, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Well, so we've been kind of discussing, number one, about the floodplain delineation, the buffers will comply with that. Sneak slope calculations, wetlands, woodlands will comply. We had a LiDAR flown out there, so we have much more accurate survey than we had when Tim first did the subdivision 10, 15 years ago. So we have much more accurate information to get better calculations on that. Number two was, I think, Steve, that was more of a comment with the acreage, to make sure that we don't violate the 1.8 acre minimum.
Yeah, that's just a reminder.
Three, the whole cul-de-sac issue, so we've discussed that. We talked about the fire chief with the fire pools, that's no problem. Street length with the winter maintenance and access is what we're gonna revise. Number four was the proposed street width. If we did a 28 feet or the waiver, we'll have that worked out by the time that we go to preliminary. Number five is a, yeah, will comply. Number six, it'll be a waiver with the lot lines.
Ken, can we start? Ken, this is Chris. Can we go back to four?
Sure.
The street width, we actually just had another cul-de-sac come in and street width was an issue and sidewalk. We'd really like to see the 28 feet as well as, we asked them to put sidewalk on at least one side of the cul-de-sac due to the fact that people want their children to be able to walk up sidewalks to get the school bus or wherever, wherever they're going. So it's something I think we need to consider there.
Okay.
If anybody else wants to chime in on that, feel free.
Well, this is Tim. I mean, to be consistent, yeah, it was exactly the conversation that we had was at least, you know, sidewalk on one side of the road. And then I guess the other question with that was the parking, if there was, you know, any parking allowed, if you know, what side or, you know, what have you.
Again, we have a large lot subdivision, so it'll be minimal parking, but as we talked about last month, you know, there's always that, someone has a party, picnic or otherwise, there's extra parking required. So it would be the same, you know, potentially parking on one side of the street.
Okay.
The only, the only other comment I got about parking from, I forget if it was the board and or the Public Works was, if we do allow any parking on these streets, that we would also post them as a snow emergency route, so you couldn't park there during a snowstorm, so they could be cleared.
Okay.
Yeah, Steve, where do we typically, I'm sorry, this is Alex. Where do we typically end the sidewalk within the cul-de-sac?
Depends where the house is, you know, where the driveway from a house would be. So each lot has access to it.
All right, so Ken, there's something for, something else for you to try to work. What we did on the last one that we, that we just looked at was, again, we wrapped, wrapped the cul-de-sac bulb and went out one side with sidewalk and made the other side, no parking, had parking on the sidewalk side, no parking on the non-sidewalk side.
Okay. Seems like a reasonable compromise there.
So you were at, I think you were at number six, though.
Number six, yeah. So the, the ordinance with the right angles from the beginning to the rear, we're gonna request a waiver on that. It's very difficult with the, the way we did this road here to get that perfect in all the lots. We can assign it some more, but I don't know if I could get it perfect in every lot.
This is Steve. We've regularly waived that as long as the lots were as, you know, close to regular as, as possible. The only ones that are significantly off would be lot one is a little awkward in shape, because they're trying to grab some lot area to the, to the side there without all the frontage. And lot two is skewed to the road, but it's a fairly rectangular lot. The rest, the other ones are, you know, more minor deviations than, than those two.
The other, I'm gonna, Steve, it's all right. I'm gonna skip up to number eight. I'll go back to seven in a second. Number eight, I've talked to Tim Snyder. It's no problem to take that 28 foot strip and deed it over to the right next to it, because that one too.
Okay. Yeah, that could be just incorporated as, you know, that lot line change could be incorporated in this plan, so it happens all at the same time.
Correct.
You'd just have to show that joining property on, on the record plan.
We'll take care of that. Back to seven with the sewage module. We've had the county out there several times now testing and we'll have that all buttoned up for you when we go into the next step. Number nine is like before, the light at Camp Rock Hill Road and then the lights at the end of everyone's driveway, we're okay with that. And that's what we're gonna submit if, for your consideration. Number 10, that will comply.
Ken?
Sure.
Ken, I'm sorry. Street lighting. What, Steve, what, do we do a 12-foot boulevard light at the entrance on the last one?
Yeah, that's our standard street light in developments. And then it was, you know, the smaller drive-by lamppost at the, at the individual lots. That's what we agreed to on the cul-de-sac over off of County Land Road.
Right, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Ken, I'm sorry.
No problem. Number 11, when we submitted the last time I was in front of you, we actually dedicated some, some open land. And maybe I misunderstood you. I thought you said we didn't need to. I just added the last one, so I could always put it back.
Good. I think the issue, Ken, this is Steve, is whether or not you have it is a sort of a policy decision of the board. The way you had the lot, though, wasn't a viable lot. So that caused other zoning problems.
Okay.
In these smaller developments outside of the, you know, core area of township, we typically haven't had set aside recreation areas, but obviously not dedicating land and recreation facilities you know, kicks in a contribution in lieu of that. So Tim will have to decide which route he wants to take.
Okay. And then, let's see, I think 12 through 15 are all will complies. And 16 is a note that I can easily change, make sure that we get it in with the, the concrete monuments in lieu of a corner iron can.
All right.
All right, so we're getting closer, but the emergency access is what we're looking for in this next submit.
Yeah, I think that's the hangup. Any planning commission members have any questions on this project?
This is Tim.
This is John. How would that emergency access road be managed if it wasn't a full-time road?
I'm sorry, I turned my mic off. This is Steve. I mean, it would be in an easement, most likely scenario would probably be, you know, if it wasn't identified as a homeowner responsibility, you would need a homeowners association to maintain that facility, which, which you may end up with in this development to handle the basins too. It depends on if those, if the stormwater facilities are made individual lot maintenance responsibilities or a community maintenance responsibility. But the potential there is for, if we wanted something more significant than one lot owner, to own or maintain it, would be a homeowners association.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Alex. My only thought is, I think if we can resolve that emergency access issue, I think the rest of us are gonna probably be on board with moving ahead with this.
This is Chris. I would tend to agree with that.
Uh, this is Chris, I would tend to agree with that. This is Andy, no further questions.
Tim, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I had said earlier, I do not have anything additional.
Okay, you got mixed up with John there. Alright, um, so Ken, sounds like you got direction and some homework to do.
Okay, thank you very much.
You got it, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, good luck.
Alright, uh, next on the agenda is Procom Roofing.
Okay, this is Steve, I guess again, just as a little overview, you all remember this property as the Wesco uh, construction company. He was a demolition and recycling guy, uh, who's gonna build two buildings on the property, a little bit different configuration of the buildings, but more or less two buildings, um, similar to what was shown here as a contractor services use. Property since been sold to, um, Procom Roofing, actually under another name, but, um, for this purpose, we'll call it Procom Roofing. Uh, they want to do their roofing business there as a contractor services, but they need to change the layout internally a little bit. Uh, so we suggested they submit this plan as a revised final plan. Uh, so we could amend the approval from the Wesco project to this if this new layout is agreeable to everyone. And we have our June fourth, uh, two thousand twenty, uh, review letter. I'm not sure who was all logged in from the applicant, maybe it could identify themselves since their first time here at the board.
Sure, this is, uh, Jason Smeealan from Lenape Valley Engineering, can everyone, uh, hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Oh, perfect, good. So, uh, let me apologize first, I, uh, had a dental emergency and I just had a tooth pulled out about five thirty this afternoon. Um, so if I sound a little bit like, uh, I don't know, like I had a stroke or something, I'm okay. So, um, but thanks for, uh, you know, having us here and like Tim's, or, uh, Steve said is, uh, we're coming back, this is a project that you're familiar with from a few years ago for Wesco Construction and Demolition Company. Um, and it was, uh, uh, we had received the preliminary and final approval at that point and we're just, uh, changing the, uh, the configuration of the buildings a little bit. Uh, and we're about a three percent increase in impervious coverage from where we were, um, originally Wesco plan. Um, essentially, everything that we're doing is about the same as the Wesco project, only, um, only better in in most, most situations. Um, so I lost my screen here, I don't know if you were looking at our, our, uh, plan, uh, the colored version of our plan. Um, uh, but you'll see that there's two buildings, there's a lighter building in the front, that's about ten thousand square feet. Uh, and then there's a darker building in the back and that's about twelve thousand square feet. Uh, the plan is for, um, Procom to move into the back building. Uh, build that building first, and then in the future, if needed, they'll expand into the front building. Um, now, Procom, they're, uh, you know, commercial and industrial type roofing, I happen to know a lot about them. Um, I I worked with them or for them, uh, in high school. Um, you know, doing roofing, they actually, uh, you know, convinced me that getting my degree and becoming an engineer was a good idea. So, uh, they were very influential in the, uh, in my career path, uh, because it's tough work. Um, but they were started in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, they have about eight people that work in the office, they have multiple crews. Uh, they do the flat roofs, um, you know, with the the pitch and the tar and and all that good stuff. Uh, they're currently in Warrington, they have a smaller site there and, uh, not that they necessarily outgrew their site, I don't think that site was probably ever big enough for them to begin with. Um, so they're, uh, looking to move out to West Rock Hill and, um, and have this as their base of operations. Um, the way they work, um, is that, you know, the majority of their their, uh, employees never come to the site, they just meet up at the job site. Same thing with, um, you know, all the materials and whatnot for roofing in general. All of that gets delivered to the site and is never really here, but they still do need a place for their, you know, storage of equipment and, uh, some of their roofing materials. Um, so, uh, if you're looking at the the colored plan, you'll see that there's two different shades of gray. Uh, the lighter shade in the front, that's the area that would be paved. Uh, and then the darker area in the back, that is the stone area, and I don't know if you remember from the West Coast site. Um, we, uh, uh, requested a waiver and it was granted to allow the majority of the site to be a stone outdoor storage area, the idea being that if, uh, you know, if they used, uh, paving, it would end up being, uh, demolished. It's sort of the same thing here is that, uh, the whole front area, the gray area, lighter gray area is gonna be the nice visible section of the of the site. Um, and then the darker gray area, that's gonna be more of their work area and their storage area. Um, and they're planning on, uh, uh, storing their, um, uh, equipment, which would consist of a couple of stakebody trucks uh, that they take from site to site with materials. Uh, there would also be a crane truck that they use, obviously, to get the materials onto the roofs. Uh, they'd have a couple of kettles and kettle is, uh, um, a, uh, a device that melts their tar for them, um, it's like a trailer hooks onto the back of a of a truck. And then obviously there'd be a, um, dumpster area and then some places for storage. The idea is to keep most of the story, most of their materials indoor, uh, but occasionally they'll have to get a delivery, um, and store some materials on the site. Um, you'll notice that the configuration is kind of in a U shape. The idea is that, um, occasionally they will need to have a tractor tractor trailer be able to get into the site. Um, will be able to maneuver around, you know, go into the site, go back behind it, come back out the front, uh, without needing to turn around. Uh, one thing I don't know if it's obvious on the plan, but there's a, uh, gate and the gate, uh, uh, gate and fence start at the second building. Um, so all of the area behind the second building, you're not gonna see from the, uh, from the street. Um, and then, uh, the fence itself will be, um, a six-foot chain link fence, uh, with the privacy slats. Um, and of course, we'll have all the buffering. You know, really, uh, that's about all I have to say, uh, other than we can go through the, um, the review letter very quickly here. Um, you know, al- almost all the clock, uh, all the comments here will comply. Um, I just wanna hit on item number three from the review. Um, which is, has to do with outdoor storage and verifying that we're meeting the requirements for outdoor storage. Um, so your ordinance requires or allows that fifty percent of your building area, fifty percent of that you can have is outdoor storage, so the idea is that you don't have more outdoor storage than you have indoor storage. Uh, so we comply with that. The items that I'm calling outdoor storage would be the parking facilities in the back where I have some plans later, some, uh, trucks, like, like, well, this stakebody and, um, uh, crane truck, uh, and the dumpster pad, that's what we're calling our our outdoor storage area. Um, and there's the hatched area that would also be outdoor storage, so we will comply with that. Um, I'm just gonna skip here because pretty much everything is a will comply and I just wanna touch on the waivers real quick. Um, these waivers, item number, uh, item number six, um, talks about the waivers and these were the same waivers that we requested as part of the West Coast subdivision, the first one was a traffic impact study. Uh, we provided some information narrative about traffic impact, um, it's really similar to Wesco. Um, and, uh, so we're asking for a waiver from the requirements of a traffic impact study, we're gonna get a Penn dot permit, we're in the process of doing that. Um, really, there's, there's the, you know, significant traffic impact from from this, this site and, uh, uh, you know, same as with the Wesco, uh, configuration. Uh, number two is we're requesting, we're still continuing to request the waiver of curves and sidewalks across the right, uh, the the street frontage. Uh, Penn dot has not requested them, in fact, Penn dot actually asked us to remove some of the curb that I had for the, uh, radiuses, the entrance radiuses and just make it regular paving. Um, so we're requesting that waiver. Uh, C from this list talks about parking, uh, uh, shade trees in the parking lot, so the ordinance requires a certain amount of shading for your parking areas. Um, I think it's, uh, thirty-five percent of the parking areas have to be shaded with, uh, with trees. Um, as with Wesco, same sort of thing here, is this is kind of a work area, trees will, to some extent, get in the way. Um, so we're able to get close to meeting that requirement, but we'll be four she- trees short of meeting the shading requirement. Um, so we're requesting, uh, that, uh, we get a waiver from those four trees. We just don't feel it's appropriate to keep it in the work area, so, um, for the Wesco property, it was actually five, um, so we have one. We're we're doing a little bit better there. Uh, and then lastly, the last waiver would be to allow, uh, the stone, um, uh, stone, stone in place of, uh, um, paving in the back section, the part that's gonna be, uh, in the fenced-in area. Um, so that would be our last waiver request, just like with the Wesco property. Um, couple things that I wanna touch on just real quick is the site lighting. Uh, on the Wesco property, when it, when we were in here, we were just gonna have building mounted lights, uh, that was all that was gonna be here. Um, in this case, we do wanna get a couple lights in the back of the yard, so there's three lights uh, back along the detention basin, still, you know, plenty of distance between us and the property owner and there's some trees back there. Um, and, uh, we're, we're gonna be mounting them somewhere between twelve and sixteen feet. Uh, we have the, the, uh, the light information on the plan and we're complying with the ordinance and, uh, you know, in general, we're trying to keep it minimalized, uh, with the lighting, but we'd like to have some lights back there for security and and whatnot. Um, and let's see here, I think, uh, really, I think that's it, you know, I don't have anything else, uh, that that I feel like I need to tell you about it, um, you know, it's, it's pretty much from an engineering standpoint, a really similar plan. You know, the building configuration has changed a little bit, if anything, I think it's, you know, for the better in terms of circulation and whatnot. Uh, and just a very slight increase in impervious coverage, so if we're, you know, successful with the township, uh, we'll have to redo our NPDS approval and we're working with Penn dot, um, getting the the Penn dot permit, uh, issued, uh, uh, for, uh, for the new applicants. Uh, really don't anticipate any problems and, uh, we're asking for, uh, recommendation for preliminary and final approval for this revised layout.
This is Tim, uh, I just have one question, you had said about that, uh, you know, initially the back building would be the building you would build and then if needed in the future do the front building. What about the access coming off of, uh, Old Bethel Pike there, uh, up to the back building? That's obviously gonna be paved initially then?
Yeah, I'm anticipating that the whole front section, all of the paving in the parking is gonna be constructed and paved rather than kind of piecemealing it. Um, I, you know, so that at the end of the day, they'll have a pad site waiting for them for the day that they need to expand essentially.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Sure.
Jason, this is Chris, um, your, uh, waiver request, were these all, uh, granted to Wesco?
Yes, they were.
Okay, the the only one I have a question on is the, the paving requirement, I know that uh, Wesco had requested that due to the fact that they run track machines and whatnot and it was gonna tear up the pavement. Um, which is why, you know, we, from what I recall is why we, uh, allowed that. Um, I'm I'm wondering if if there is a viable reason why that shouldn't be paved.
Um, yeah, sure, uh, I guess, you know, from a, from a practicality standpoint, um, you know, with some of the equipment that they have back in there, you know, uh, roofing is not a pretty industry, uh, necessarily. Um, so what we wanna do is concentrate on the front of the property and make that look nice and kinda treat the back sort of a little bit like a closet, I would say, um, you know, to to keep the equipment and whatnot back there. Um, so what they're trying to do here is they they hired an architect, uh, to design the building and I don't know if you're familiar with the, um, the Nova Drift Store in Hilltown at, uh, at Broad in three thirteen. It's a pole building structure, but they've done some things that are nice with the architecture. Um, you know, in terms of some gables and and some, uh, interesting, uh, you know, siding options. Um, they're trying to kind of focus on putting those nice things in the front, um, and saving some money in the back. And for a practical standpoint, for roofing industry, you know, it's, it's, you know, preferable to have stone back there rather than paving that's gonna, you know, need to be maintained in the future at a big expense to repave it. Um, you know, because you're still gonna, you're gonna, you know, mess it up. Now, what we don't, you know, one thing that I would point out is that, you know, Procom may not be here forever, um, you know, so someone else in the future, maybe twenty years from now, comes in and gets this site. It'll be all in a condition where they can just come in and and, uh, um, and pave it. Um, you know, it'll be set up, it's graded properly to do that. Um, but right now, we'd really like to keep it stone back there to, you know, concentrate on on keeping the front looking nice.
Alright, anybody have any comments on that? I I honestly, I don't have a big issue with it, I just wanted some clarification because I knew why we had done that for Wesco.
Yeah, this is Tim, I don't have any problems with that.
This is Andy, no.
This is Alex, uh, I don't have problems with the paving, I did have two questions. One on the plan, it shows the fence is a six-foot stockade as opposed to chain link.
Oh, if it shows that, that was a mistake, because it's definitely supposed to be, uh, chain link, that must have been a leftover from Wesco. Wes was actually gonna fabricate his own fence, um, he has a saw, had a sawmill and he was gonna make a stockade fence. Um, so if that detail's still on there, that's incorrect, it should be, uh, chain link with the privacy slats.
The other question I had was, I think the owner in the back had concerns about the lighting. Were they notified that this plan is back in before the township?
No, they haven't been notified yet, but what I figured we could do is, um, before this goes to the Board of Supervisors, we can, uh, send the notification out there and I actually, you know, I have no problem contacting them directly. I don't recall that about the lighting, I I don't, but, um, you know, that that could be the case. But I don't remember, I actually can't remember any public interest other than, you know, people being a little scared about the recycling.
Yeah, this, this, Steve, I I do recall that, that property owner, uh, my recollection was his drainage concern because there is that drainage channel that runs sort of parallel to the back property line and then it cuts through his property and out to Old Bethel Pike. Uh, and I think your design leaves that existing channel be and you discharge, you know, that will drain into the existing channel, but we're not changing anything right along his his back property line. And I agree with Jason, I think there there was a lot of concern with, uh, screening and things from the, you know, the fear of what would end up there as a recycling business.
Yeah, I agree, Steve, I, his major concern was that, but I thought they also had some comment on the lighting, so I wasn't sure.
He may have, I don't recall.
This is Chris, he definitely had, he was finding things that slowed this process down, uh, because it was in his backyard, to be honest with you. Uh, but he did have comments about lighting, he had comments about drainage, he had comments about screening.
Yeah, but we, yeah, we can definitely send notifications out and then we'll have this same kind of discussion with the Board of Supervisors. At the end of the day, we're complying with the ordinances when it comes to lighting, you know, and if there is a concern, we can, we can work with them, we're trying to keep it, you know, keep it minimal as possible, but, you know, provide some lighting back there to, for security purposes. You know, and we do have a fair amount of space between him and the prop, you know, his property line and our, where our lights are. And then he actually has a fair amount of woods between him, uh, and his house, but, uh, you know, we can, uh, we definitely send those notifications out.
This is Andy, I I have a question about the the planting, um, so in the southern half, southern portion of the lot there, there's, there's no trees, yet there's trees around the the rest of the perimeter. Uh, I was wondering, you know, why, why you stopped there, why that area there is open? Especially since we're a couple trees short, I think, four or five, did I hear?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, let me hold on a second, let me plug my phone in here, I, uh, I couldn't get my computer to actually log on, I had to use my wife's cellphone, it was the only one that could log on here, alright, here we go. So the question was about, um, the perimeter trees along the, along the driveway or is it the perimeter trees for the buffer area? Um, we got like two.
Along the driveway and that southern, southern part right there, yeah. Along the driveway, in that southern, southern part right there.
Okay, yeah, so the idea with the trees, you know, we wanted to put them on the, kind of on the left-hand side of the entrance as you come in because it's pretty convenient. We have a swale there. We have some plantings that aren't counting towards shading in the basin area that are near to the area. But mainly, what we want to try to do is kind of keep the trees to as much as we can kind of out of the parking lot. When you're talking about like a parking lot area, your ordinance doesn't make a distinction between commercial and industrial. In a commercial-type setting, you know, you want to have islands and trees all around to get shade for your, you know, for your parking, your vehicles and customers and whatnot. With the industrial kind of use, we sort of want to, you know, keep things opened as much as possible. So we basically, we put trees where we thought it was convenient, where we'd like to have them. We put trees where we thought, you know, we can accommodate them without like running into them with our trucks. And that's sort of how we came up. I mean, we have a little bit of flexibility for adding some additional trees if we had to. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're just trying to keep it clean, clear.
Jason, this is Steve. I think what Plan Commission members are trying to say is there's a run along the property boundary, the southern property boundary next to the, essentially next to the front building where the well is, that there are no trees proposed. You're just maintaining the existing vegetation along the property line. And I think what he's saying, if you have four extra trees in a parking lot, and you put them spread out along that, along that tree row there, it would be an alternate place for the trees, and it would fill out the new plantings around the perimeter of the property.
No, yeah, absolutely, no, I totally misunderstood. Yeah, I'm looking at it, and the reason why there's no trees there is that we have this perimeter buffer, and we're only required to buffer the outdoor storage portion. That's why it kind of stops there. But yeah, I guess we could, you know, probably put some trees over there, you know, help with the buffer. It's only four trees.
What, Jason, this is Chris, what is there now naturally?
It's trees, I would call it like old field-type trees, you know, where it's not, it wasn't, I don't think this site has always been woods. I think someone stopped farming it maybe fifty years ago. So the whole center portion is kind of opened. And then the kind of the perimeter is, I wouldn't say, you know, high caliper. There's probably not a whole lot of good trees in there, I guess that's what I'm saying, you know. And it's, but it's, you know, it's not big, big trees, they're smaller, you know, younger growth.
Right, well, put some good ones in there, and you'll make a lot of people happy.
Got it.
Seriously, is that something you can do? You know, get your, I mean, you're not going to be parking lots, shade trees, and treat.
Yeah, no problem.
I mean, that would avoid the whole contribution issue if we just relocated the trees from the parking lot to the buffer on the property line.
So this is Tim, would that make the waiver request then to allow the trees to be planted elsewhere on a property to satisfy the four trees being short in the parking area? Would that amend that waiver?
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
This is Alex, I'd agree.
Andy, I'm okay with that.
John, I agree.
Any other concerns we need to be talking about?
Well, this is Tim again, so if that's the case, and we're all okay with that, would that then eliminate the payment of contribution in lieu of for those if we're accepting the four trees elsewhere on the property?
No, this is Steve, yeah, I think that would.
Yes, that's what.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Win-win. Steve, do you have any other, any other issues we should be discussing here?
No, it is straightforward. You know, there's a lot of things that are a little bit different, but on the whole, it's not extremely different. If you're comfortable with what they're describing, I don't have any significant concerns with the plan.
This is Andy, we haven't run through the letter.
So how would we?
We haven't run through the letter, if we're going to recommend, you know, preliminary final tonight, I do think we need to step through all the points, albeit quickly.
Yeah, sure, I can run through it real quick. So item number one talks about notification, which we'll do that before the supervisors. And supervisors obviously have some questions, and we'll kind of, I think we'll have a, you know, kind of a brief meeting like we're having now on the differences between the two. It's not a problem. Item number two just talks about what the project is and that there's a three percent increase in the impervious coverage ratio, but we're still complying. Two, item number three talks about the outdoor storage. And that's where I told you about the requirement that you can have fifty percent of building space as outdoor storage, which we'll note of your, that on the plan, but we clearly comply. Four talks about the buffers, which we're still providing, just like the Wesco, and then the fence, which is a six-foot-high chain length, chain length with the privacy slats rather than the stockade. Five talks about, the ordinance requires forty-five or some parking spaces, and we have fifty-five, but it's more than we would possibly need. So we're all, will comply there. Six is the waivers, which we talked about. Seven is the HOP permit, which we'll get. Eight is the conservation district, which we're working on. Nine is the site lighting, which the only difference there is the three poles in the back at twelve to six feet in height. So we'll get that information to Steve, but it will comply. Ten is just talking about stormwater, everything's pretty much the same from that standpoint as the Wesco. The eleven talks about the well and the sewage holding tank. So we have an onsite well, and I think we actually have the permit for the sewage holding tank. It's in the process of getting that, but there's not going to be any issues there. Twelve is construction cost estimate for establishing the escrow, which is not going to be a problem, and that's it, that was a quick letter.
Just so the planning commission is clear, I reviewed this as a revision to the prior approval. So you're not really approving a new preliminary file plan, you're approving a revised final plan with all the conditions that were approved the last time with the minor exceptions that we noted in this letter.
Are members comfortable granting that?
I see.
And if so?
Yeah, I mean, I am, I think we have to go to the waiver request and modify that, or is that just kind of goes with the, you know, the review of the existing plan, Steve?
Well, the only, if you're comfortable with the waivers, you don't have to say anything. The only thing you might want to include in a motion would be, instead of a contribution for trees, you want the trees planted onsite along the property boundary. Those extra parking area trees.
Do you want to make a motion?
So Tim? Yeah, so I mean, yes, I'll make the motion, that's fine, I'm not exactly sure how you want to word it, but.
That's why I'm asking you to make it.
Well, so it's make a motion to grant what, preliminary final? We accept the revised, the revision? And changing waiver C to move into trees for the parking area to the other portion of the property?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Hey, motion carries.
Thank you very much, I do have to say. Yeah, so thank you very much, I appreciate it, and this was great. I'm glad you're doing meetings in the Zoom format. I do have to say that I'm really sorry that Mr. Markley isn't here. This is the first time I've been to West Rock Hill without him. It is completely different. I really enjoyed working with him, but you did a good job of keeping me on my toes, too, so. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, good luck.
All right, have a good night, thank you.
See you, Steve.
Is THP?
Yes.
Steve, you want to give us the rundown?
Yeah, I'll give you the little overview again. Some of you may remember, there used to be a, it's called precision finishing. That was stuck back along the driveway below Grandview Hospital, way in the back corner. And some years ago, they subdivided their property and were partners in construction with the Hidden Meadows Buildings. The, I guess it's a senior apartment building and then the dementia unit. And there's an access road, they extended the access road that would serve the office complex out front, whether it's Stonebridge or Stonebridge Professional Office, I think. And that was a private road, and it continues to be a private road that services those properties. Well, the original building of Precision Finishing was recently demolished. They did essentially an act two cleanup, because it was an old machine shop, so there were some issues back there, some underground storage tanks and some other legacy groundwater issues on that property. So that, to my understanding, that's all been cleaned up. THP is now involved, I could explain better, but I think they have the property under agreement with the current owner, and they're proposing this age-qualified townhouse-type development, again, using the same shared access road, private access road for this development. Essentially, the hospital property extends along the top of the sheet there to the north except for that one little out parcel, that landlocked piece of ground that's been back there forever. There's a house there, uses the same old Precision Finishing driveway to get back to that house, and will continue to use that driveway to get back to that house. So at that, I'll give it to Bob Iraick, and I can give a little more details on the plan.
Okay, hi, guys, can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, this site is sixteen point seven three four one acres, and it's in the township's IS, which is Institutional Service zoning district. The proposal intends to use a B-ten age-qualified community use. And as Steve mentioned, it was previously contained the Precision Finishing site. The maximum density is five point six dwelling units per acre, and based on some preliminary site capacity calculations, as many as eighty units could be installed. This proposal proposes seventy-five townhouses. The property, yeah, as Steve mentioned, is behind the Stonebridge Professional Center next to the Hidden Meadows Nursing Home and dementia buildings. The community is served by public water and sewer. Other than that, Steve reviewed the plan. If you want to go through his review letter, or if you have any preliminary questions, we can answer them now. With me tonight also is Dean Everett, the house from the THP.
All right, any questions from the commission before we get started?
This is Tim, I have none.
Alex, I have none.
John, I have none.
All right, Bob, why don't you go ahead and we'll just run down through the letter.
Okay, a lot of these are just will comply, but we'll start off. The first one item, Steve describes the project. The units will be proposed as a condominium, there will not be lot lines. And they are in groupings of three units and six units. All of the units will have two-car garages with eighteen-foot-wide driveway in the front. Item number two, oh, yeah, and homeowners' documents, they will be prepared and will be provided at final plan stage, that's when we typically submit them to the township. Item two has to do with the ingress and egress to the site. As it's laid out, there's two entrances, which we are calling Road A and Road C. And then there's another internal road called Road B, and that terminates at a cul-de-sac, Road D, which terminates near the northerly property line. The, as Steve points out, that that last portion of that road would be considered a cul-de-sac. But I believe it's only about seven hundred feet long because I would think it would be measured from the intersection of Road C. And there are twenty units proposed in that portion of the roadway.
But you have no other, no other access to that from the intersection of B and C, correct?
There is not, but we're proposing a path which would also serve as an emergency access that would run behind units nineteen to thirty. The width of that would be beefed up, right now, we're proposing it as ten feet wide, which could also serve as an emergency access should Road D or the end portion of B be blocked at any point.
Where would it actually access?
It would go from the end of the cul-de-sac up where the cul-de-sac bulb is, and loop around behind those units down below the detention basin, and then connect back to Road C along the southerly property line.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, it's shown as a faint on this, you know, version, a lighter colored path that follows that track.
The label was inadvertently left off. Gotcha. All right, well, we might have, we'll have some discussion about that. Steve, what's your, what's your thoughts on that one?
Well, I just had, I just found out about this this afternoon, that that was the intent there. It's viable to a point, you know, we need to show that an ambulance or something could traverse that path, so it can't be too wiggly to get back there. If it was just something that happened in the road that blocked access, you know, that's probably workable. If it were actually, you know, say, a unit that was on fire, I doubt people are going to be using that back driveway to get, you know, past a fire scene. So it's helpful and would work in a lot of circumstances. I don't know if it's, you know, the hundred percent most desirable answer. I think Bob may want to talk a little bit about discussions they had with Grandview because there was potentially some access up into the Grandview property, but that doesn't seem, like Grandview wants to pursue that connection. access up into the Grandview property, but that doesn't seem, like Grandview wants to pursue that connection.
Yeah, that's true. We did have some preliminary conversations with Grandview and they declined to to allow us to connect to their access road to the rear.
This is Tim. Could you extend Road C out to kind of meet up with Road D there out through that open space area? And then continue to have rear access as a walking path?
Well, the basins are shown preliminarily. So we may be able to do something like that, but the basin is there because that's the low point of the site.
Understood. Then another question, then you had said about the length of the cul-de-sac and you had said from the intersection of Road B and D. What is the actual length of Road D from the center line there of Road B to the?
It's about 350, 400 feet. It's about 300 feet from Road C to that 90 degree angle.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the measurement in our letter obviously is from the Road C and Road B intersection because that's the last point of, you know, alternate access. Even though it's, even though it's labeled as two different roads, it's essentially just one long cul-de-sac. I'd hate to impinge on the, on the Weisels, but I'm not sure where their, where their home and driveways are. It almost seemed like if you could connect off the cul-de-sac to the driveway on the Weisel property and then, which then goes out all the way through the northern property boundary, essentially for the old drive that goes all the way out to Climber, Climber, wrong job, all the way out to Lawn Avenue. But I don't know that the Weisels would entertain that connection either.
Yeah, that might be a stretch, seeing you're surrounding them with that many townhomes. They might feel infringed upon already.
Probably.
So you have, how many do we have on there? If we, if we consider a cul-de-sac from the intersection of B and C, how many homes are actually on it?
That would be 20.
20. Any other input?
Sorry, this is Alex. I think just following up on our conversation from two, two plans ago, I think we'd have some issues with that.
Now, we do have some type of emergency access. Whether it's appropriate for currency vehicles, we don't know.
Yeah, and we would provide an auto turn plan verifying that the 47 foot truck could maneuver. We haven't had conversations with Sarsfield.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we've forwarded this plan or not to the fire company. I know I didn't receive any comment back, but we could do that, you know, sooner than later, but we could do it with the sketch plan and get some initial comment from the emergency services at this point too.
All right, well, I think we can't do anything until we hear from them. Certainly can't move forward allowing it out from that, that source. That being said, should we just move forward on the, on the discussion here?
Sure. Let's see, item number three. That's a will comply. It's a, the road in private street and mentioned is a 50 foot wide right of way that was set up back in 1986 when the stone, I guess the front lot was subdivided all. And then it was further developed when the Hidden Meadows was constructed. And we'll provide documentation to your solicitor verifying their ability to utilize that road. Item number four, that's simply a will comply. Item number five, recreation land. What we're proposing now is mainly the cadum paths, which are somewhat extensive through the development. You don't know what other recreation facilities you would have in mind or what would be utilized, whether it be shuffleboard or pickleball or but we're amenable to providing additional recreational facilities, so as long as they're practical and there'll be something that'll get used.
Steve, you have any input on?
I would just say again, our one truly, you know, age restricted community was Rose Cliff. That has, and I forget exactly what they had in the back there now, if it was shuffleboard or horseshoe pits, little sitting area. And that all, you know, was interwoven with the, with the trail system they had. So it wasn't, you know, probably talking similar number of units overall, wasn't extensive. It wasn't obviously a basketball court or tennis courts, but it was a little something more than just, just the pathway. I think they have some garden area back there now. They've developed it a little bit.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We can propose something. And we'll also be proposing benches along the pass system. I know that was a requirement of subdivision. Let's see, number six, that's a will comply. Number seven, that's a will comply. Number eight, natural resource protection and site capacity calculations. We'll provide them with the preliminary plan submission. A, B, and C having to do with the waters of the Commonwealth, the wetlands, prepare and buffer the, the consultant's meeting with the Army Corps out there tomorrow to verify the city. We'll have more information on that when we have, bring in preliminary plans. Item number nine is a will comply. Dean, did you want to, want to speak to that phase one study?
Not unless there was specific questions. I didn't bring the paper today.
In my mind, we did, we did do a phase one study.
We did.
Yeah.
Fair amount of information made it available to the township back when we had some initial discussions, but I think with the preliminary plan, you should package that up and make it, you know, include it with your preliminary plan submission.
Bob, does that site have an environmental covenant?
I don't believe so. Dean, do you recall if there was any covenants?
I do not recollect.
We'll verify that.
All righty, thank you.
Item, let's see, item number 10 is a will comply. Item number 11. We can adjust some of the parking lots to be more centralized. Specifically, we park a lot along the southerly boundary. We can, we can move that over. And again, each of the units will have two car garage and two spaces in front, recognizing that one of the spaces in the garage we do not get credit for. But essentially, each unit will have three spaces and then there's an additional 75 spaces provided in the lots. Item number 12. Yeah, the streets are proposed at 28th line. Under 12, item A, street right of way, the roads are all going to be privately owned and adequate areas being set aside for installation of utilities. There's the cartway itself. There's a grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk. And there will be adequate room for utilities. 12B, there is no one street parking proposed. Parking would be in driveways, garages, or the designated parking areas. Item 12C, those are the two stubs. One is at the end of Road A and one is at the, basically the beginning of Road D. We can eliminate those and provide a curve within the roadway and then just provide a driveway access to those two end units. So it's a little stub that's basically just for the driveway of those two units and we can handle that with a driveway. Item 12D, we just discussed that, the length of the cul-de-sac and the number of units. Item 12E has to do with the street alignment requirements. These are essentially a parking lot. They're low speed and we would, we would ask for a waiver of the street alignment requirements. Item 12F, that's a will comply. We can provide traffic calming within the streets. Item 13, traffic impact study, that's a will comply. We'll provide that with the preliminary plan submission. Item 14, because of the nature of the development and the slow speed of the roadways, we would request a waiver of the driveways within 60 feet of an intersection. Item 15, stormwater, that's a will comply. Item 16, that's a will comply. And item 17, the provision of a narrative, we'll provide that with the preliminary plan. That would be a will comply as well.
Assume that 18 through 20 are will complies?
Have to forgive me. I didn't copy the last three comments. They would, they would be a will comply.
All right. You don't have, you don't have a waiver sheet yet, do you?
No, that has not been submitted.
Just a handful of waivers plus the cul-de-sac. A fair assumption or a fair statement, I could say.
This, this is Steve. I, I mean, the other item that's significant, that's not a waiver issue, but you know, they have to resolve it as resource protection calculation. They have to get their wetlands established, any buffers, any, any other protection areas that they need to establish and make sure that they still have sufficient area remaining for this layout. So depending on those studies, this, you know, presumably could, could change their configuration a little bit. But that's not something you could waive. That's all zoning resource protection requirement. So they just, they have to meet that.
We're aware of that.
Yeah, so the, which leaves the bigger question, I think, is the that emergency access to that rear area of the development.
Yeah, I would say that's the big one. Well, again, you know, you're going to check, we're going to see what the fire marshal has to say. And whatever other, other sources we need to hear from about that. Not particularly comfortable with it the way it is now, for sure.
Steve, did you want us to submit the plan down to the fire marshal? How does that normally, did you usually do that?
Bob, we have better success when the council does it.
Okay.
More chance of them responding to us than they will to you.
He was pretty good responding to me about the fire truck, so.
Yeah, usually. But we've been doing it this, this way. Greg will, Greg will send the plan and we'll, this case, we won't just send them the plan. I'll give them a little explanation of what we talked about with that potential for the path being used as an access way. Did we talk about the other access point off of Road A connecting to the old driveway?
We did not, but that's, again, that's going to be a, proposed as 10 foot wide access, cadum access to connect into that existing drive.
So that, that's going, going north up to the shared drive that Weisel uses?
Correct.
Yes, yep. And then it goes out to Lawn Avenue.
Correct. Okay, thank you. There anything else we need to discuss on this tonight? Any input from the other members?
This is Tim. I have none.
Alex, I have none.
John, I have none.
All right, well, unless you have anything else you want to present, I would say we give them some direction.
Okay, we'll get the additional information regarding the environmental features. We'll get some information from the fire department.
All right, we'll wait to see what we come back with.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, have a good night.
Night, Bob.
Thank you.
Is anyone getting an odd feedback? Vocal?
Yes.
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 Yeah, it's been kind of weird.
I think it's gone now.
Yeah, I think it was Bob.
It's his mic.
Yeah, I think it was Bob.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, so next on the agenda is old business, the alternate member. We only received one application and that was from Tony Bogner. I don't, I don't know if Tony's on with us tonight or not. Tony, if you're on, jump on in.
I'm here.
Hey, Tony, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good. Seeing that you're the only applicant, we really don't need to interview you, but if you'd like to say anything, feel free. Otherwise, we'll, we'll work on our recommendation.
No, I don't, unless you have questions for me. No, I don't have any.
No, I think we got sufficient information from you last time we interviewed you and certainly appreciating you making the time to come on board. Anybody have any questions for Tony?
I don't. This is Alex.
This is Tim, I don't.
This is Andy, I do not.
All right, well, I'm just going to make a motion that we recommend Tony as the alternate planning commission member.
I'll second that.
I'd give that second to Alex. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so Tony, I'm going to recommend to the board next week that they accept you as the alternate planning commission member and certainly thank you for volunteering your services.
Yes, glad to serve. Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Tony.
Yes.
All right. I don't have any new business. Do we? Engineering, do we have anything? On approvals list or anything? Steve?
I just had to dig it up here. I don't think so. I have a long list of plans on here, a lot of hangers-on, but the crats I'll do is finally got recorded, so that's, that'll be coming off the list. And I think the Young Track, they finally resolved all their paperwork issues. That's that Clay Heckler's minor subdivision to get a access to Mountain View Road.
Yep.
I think that's finally going to be resolved. And I think even Gavin Construction is finally getting resolved, so maybe a couple of these coming off the approval list sooner or later.
How about, is it Eastern? How about, uh, is it Eastern Montgomery, there on, on Mill?
Yeah, from the, from the engineer a couple months back, saying they were working on the plan, and then we hit the whole COVID thing, so I don't know what happened to that, I haven't heard from anybody since.
Okay.
Steve, it says about, uh, Butter Creek and Lot Seven, something needs to be done by seven-one, is that something you'll get resolved, or?
Yeah, I'm working on that, I've already notified Tim, um, potentially, there's already a thirty-day granted because of the Governor's Act, but I want to get that straightened out with Tim, and we'll have that resolved for the board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, they, the governor, they, or not the governor, but the legislature passed, uh, I think it's Act Fifteen, which essentially, they call told the, the time review period from when the first order came out to thirty days after the legislation, it was, it was really kind of bizarre, the time period they picked, but essentially gave everybody an extra month or so on their, on their review period. But that's for his original third, you know, the original layout plan, not this sketch plan that we're playing with now.
Right. All right, um, anybody have any new business? I don't.
This is Alex, I don't.
John, I don't.
Andy, no.
Tim, no.
All right, uh, public comment, does anybody want to make a public comment? Are we getting any emails?
No emails, no public comment.
Okay. Well, no public comment, I would, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion, this is Tim.
This is Andy, I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. So, thanks, everybody.
Yep, have a good night, everybody.
Good day.
Yes, good meeting.
Andy, congratulations, I think I saw your son got straight A's.